Well, I've been told that I have a loud enough voice so we're gonna just keep on truckin'. I'm going to call to order the September 25th, 2017 regular meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. I welcome everyone here tonight and ask that you please silence your phones and your electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge. Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Manera? And in tribute to our lost board member, Mr. Nels, present Copeland Densby.
Present. Ms. Wagner, thank you for calling the roll. You all might know that one of our board colleagues was late today, Mr. Chris Nels. We appreciate all of your support for Mr. Nels and his family. And on behalf of my board colleagues, we will sorely miss him. And we have been able to participate in his services all day today. This is tough for us. I'm gonna ask that we take a moment of silence for our friend. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from several meetings. There's a special meeting on September the 6th, a regular board meeting on September 6th, special meeting September the 11th, and regular board meeting September 11th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. We have several outstanding presentations today. I am grateful first and foremost to Bond Hill Academy for having us. So give it up for yourself. It is our desire as a board to participate more with our community. And so you'll see us in schools much like this as we move forward. I'm gonna turn over now to our superintendent for introductions.
Yes, so I'm very happy and proud to introduce the staff of Bond Hill School led by the principal Sharon Johnson. I'm really happy because this is my old stomping ground as a student, K through 6th grade. And so Bond Hill's just done an outstanding job with their new program focused on math and science. And you can see the lab coats that they're wearing. So we're really excited to welcome Principal Sharon Johnson to the mic. Thank you.
President, Copeland Densby, members of the board, Superintendent Mitchell, Treasurer Wagner, and guests. Good evening.
Good evening.
Will Bond Hill's staff please stand. Remain standing, please. Thank you. It is an honor for us to host the first board meeting here at Bond Hill Academy. This is an exciting moment for our school and our community. And we are so excited to have you here. Therefore, we truly welcome you here this evening. You may be seated. We are proud to acknowledge that our community is excited, truly excited, about our Vision 2020 program focused around math and science. News and research constantly remind us of the shortage of unrepresented minorities in the STEM careers. Well, Bond Hill has the answer. Our goal here at Bond Hill Academy of Math and Science Discovery is to create career figures that are no longer hidden, but figures that will be truly recognized for the contribution that they will make in our world. At this time, I would like to introduce to you Ms. Tiara Washington to welcome you from the student body.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tiara Washington. I am a proud 5th grader here at Bond Hill Academy of Math and Science Discovery. When I grow up, I would like to be a math teacher. On behalf of the students pre-K through 6th, welcome to our school. We are happy that you are here. Later in our presentation, we will have a special discovery just for you. And now, I would like to introduce Lenaya Bennett to introduce living legends.
Testing. Okay, let's talk about it.
Good evening.
Come up here so they can see.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lenaya Bennett and I am a proud 5th grader here at Bond Hill Academy of Math and Science Discovery. When I grow up, I want to become a pharmacist. This year, 5th and 6th graders are learning about living legends. Some living legends are famous African Americans, scientists, mathematicians, and engineers. We will feature two living legends this evening. Dr. Katherine Johnson, a mathematician whose work and life's... Whose life and work supported the NASA space program. She was included in the movie Hidden Figures. And Delde Gracie Tyson, an astrophysicist, author, and science communicator. With his own radio show, he made science more accessible to the public. At this time, I would like to introduce my former teacher, Ms. Weaver, a lead teacher here at Bond Hill.
I should've went before her. She moving and everything? Alright, okay. That is my former student. Thank you, Lenaya. So let me once again say good evening and once again welcome everyone for taking their time out of their busy schedule and coming to Bond Hill Academy of Math and Science Discovery. I am here as a representative of the teachers and the staff. I'm the 3rd grade teacher, as she stated. I teach ELA and I am a team leader in our building. We as a whole would like to express our sincere gratitude and say thank you to the Cincinnati Public School Board, our school superintendent Laura Mitchell, and our dedicated principal Sharon Johnson for having the faith and the belief that we could not only shift, but we could also create and maintain a culture shift in this building that would be conducive for every student to be able to overcome any and all barriers and be successful. I am at heart a teacher. Children are my passion. Teaching is my profession. And every student excelling is at my heart's goal. I tell them, "You are the best. You are a king or a queen. You are a royal champion." Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King said, "We must use time creatively and forever realize that time is always the hope to do great things." Sharon Johnson tells the students every day, "I love you all and I believe in each and every one of you." We, the staff at Bond Hill Academy of Math and Science Discovery, have internalized this culture shift because Lenaya Bennett could very well be our future President of the United States of America. And her peer, Mia Maya Hudson, well, he could find the cure for cancer. And Daria Willis could find the solution to a problem we don't even know exists yet. And because each and every child who puts their own future in our hands deserves the opportunity to reach his or her full potential. The opportunity to fulfill the American dream and the opportunity to lead this world to greater heights. This is the reason for the shift and our ultimate goal for all of our students. Thank you.
I would like to introduce another former student, Luke Hunley Henderson, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Luke Henderson Hunley. I am a proud 5th grade student. I will be your Discovery Lab narrator.
But before we begin, let me introduce our STEM students of the evening.
Good evening. My name is Cameron Dowdell here at Bond Hill Academy of Math and Science Discovery. When I grow up, I want to be a electrical engineer.
My name is Angel Archie and when I grow up, I wanna be a computer engineer. And I'm a proud 3rd grader. So easy. My name is Eric Rogers and I'm a proud 3rd grader. And when I grow up, I want to be a Navy biologist.
First, we are asking the board members to please participate with us in our lab experiment. This experiment involves the following materials. The two staff members that are passing out the materials to you are Assistant Principal, Ms. Crawford and the pre-K through... And the pre-K through 3rd grade science coach, Ms. Warden. This experiment involves the following materials: a paper plate, a coffee filter, a black marker, and a cup of water. For those of you who are uncertain, please follow our smart 3rd grade students. Please make a large black dot in the middle of the coffee filter. Next, fold the coffee filter in half. Then fold it in half again. Your coffee filter is now the shape of a cone. Now please place the tip of the cone with the black dot in the water and observe the science magic. Leave the filter in the cone. Leave the filter in the water. You've just completed a process called chromatography. Chromatography is the process of separating a mixture using a solid or a liquid. As the water flows through the coffee filter, the different colors are carried out of the water at different rates. This allows us to determine the colors that make up black. That's amazing to see the colors change.
Thank you for exploring with us.
We hope you'd enjoy this experiment. This ends our presentation. Thank you.
Do board members have any questions or comments? No questions or comments? I want to thank our principal, Ms. Sharon Johnson, for an amazing, amazing job with our students. Ms. Johnson and her team. And I gotta say to our superintendent, I looked at her off to the side and she is just glowing with pride. This is what it's about. So don't tell us that our kids can't learn, that they can't be great, that they can't have aspirations. Every person knows what they want to be when they grow up. I think that's phenomenal. So I was here, I don't know, school started on August the 18th? I was here the day or so before school started.
August the 8th.
I was here August the 8th, okay. And so what I discovered when I came into this building from some previous time having been here, just the energy and the excitement of parents and students who are gearing up for the start of school. So for me to now sit here and see the work that you began this school year, I personally want to congratulate you. I think just a job well done. Good luck for the rest of the year. It looks like our next presentation will be related to an alcohol waiver. Is Dr. Vanessa Kelly present with the Clark Foundation? Yes. We'll have you at the podium, please.
Hello. Hello. First of all, I want to say it was an awesome pleasure witnessing that prior presentation. That was phenomenal. I am Dr. Kelly. I'm with the Clark Montessori Foundation.
I'm Lisa Crew. I'm the treasurer of the foundation.
And we are here, first of all, as true supporters of obviously the Cincinnati Public School system and our organization, our foundation. Is an organization that is inherently dependent on funds that we bring in for Clark Montessori. And obviously those funds are critical to the well-being of our youth who are students of Clark Montessori. And that support is for a range of things like scholarships, field studies, technology, music, athletics, and the list goes on. Every year, we have an annual fund event. And that event is basically to kick off our yearly annual fund fundraising status that we endure for the year. And with that, this event generally requires, this is an event that we've had for quite some time, a few years, but this event requires a request for a waiver for alcohol because this kickoff event is generally held at the school, Clark Montessori. And so with that...
We're requesting the alcohol waiver and the use of the facilities. This is a renewal. We've done it several times in the past. We've met with the most success when we are able to invite guests, potential donors, and parents into the school where the children can display their artwork and their music work. And we have the opportunity to point out to them what Clark is and what we offer to the students. So we've come before you again to request that we may use our school auditorium and the lobby and the restrooms and serve alcohol at the facility on November 4th.
Thank you so much. Do board members have any questions or comments? Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our final presentation will be First Ladies for Health. It looks like we have First Lady Dina Cranley, who's the chair, and First Lady Barbara Lynch, who's also a chair. We're excited to hear this great information about an upcoming event, or actually events with a plural in our community.
Good evening, everyone. This year, on August, October 8th, something went too fast for me. October 8th, the First Ladies for Health will be having our annual health fair. Dina and I are chairpersons of the First Ladies for Health. Probably you already know that she's the first lady of the city. And the pastors' wives of the churches are commonly known as first ladies. As first ladies, what?
Who are more important.
Oh, well, I don't know if there's any more importance than the mayor's wife. Anyway, we have an annual health fair. It's a family health fair. We have engaged the cooperation of 52 health agencies and hospitals in the city. They come together with us to partner with us to put on this health fair each year. This is our third annual. Last year, we were able to give service to somewhere between 2,500 and 3,000 family members. We offer, not only do we do screenings of all kinds, but we also offer follow-up because the Cincinnati Board of Health also is a partner of ours. The screenings are numerous and I think Dina probably has a list of them all. We want to partner with you also because we understand that children learn better when they're healthy. We have a partnership with Cincinnati Children's Hospital. They offer all kinds of screenings to the children, including hearing, asthma, lung screens, flu shots, all kinds of... And this year, they also are going to do a lot of entertainment to bring the children in. The churches are very involved in this because as first ladies, we're in the community. We know the community. We know the heart of the people. We know the health of the people. We know the issues of the people. And so through this health fair, we're also able to address these things during the year by providing programs and education and things of that nature so that our community and our children can be healthier.
This is an amazing initiative. And as Barbara said, we're in our third annual. We're gonna be in 14 neighborhoods this year, 16 locations on the same day, Sunday, October 8th. The screenings are not just your typical screenings. We'll have HIV screening, prostate screening, glucose, blood pressure, vision, hearing, oh my gosh, so many, dental for children, speech and language hearing. The flu shot is a huge campaign we're promoting this year. Children's Hospital and WCPO along with the Cincinnati Recreation Commission, UC Health and Kroger. We're all pushing for the flu shot for adults and children. So there is this, you know, we believe, you know, when everyone comes together, there's power in unity. You know, that's a no-brainer. When we all come together, we're able to really make a difference. And when you have 50 healthcare partners, along with partners like CPS, who've been a partner of ours since the very beginning, I don't know if you guys know that. But and CRC this year, it really tells us that everybody cares in the community. Everybody wants to make a difference. And we are really looking for you to promote this, tell your family, tell your friends, and also promote it in the schools. And so thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
Just a comment. I know that that partnership is very real. And I know that our school district, under our leadership of three successful superintendents in any number of boards, our district has focused for quite some time on the whole child and the health of our children and our families. And I don't know if it's 24, or 25, or 26 school-based health centers that we have, which is more than the whole state combined. So this is obviously not just our initiative or your initiative, but obviously Greater Cincinnati believes this is a crucial effort in the, to have healthier children, healthier families, and more particularly finding ways to make the center of the community be the school, be the health center. And I love the partnership with the faith-based community as well as the political and the educational community. We can't help but succeed. So we appreciate the leadership from the faith community.
And just to give you a number, we, Children's Hospital screened 750 kids last year. So, you know, there's still a need and we love the school-based health centers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any kudos? Michelle?
Yes, thank you. In addition to the wonderful presentation, which was a pleasant surprise, and so kudos to the young people for that. But, and I also want to give kudos to the students from SCPA who honored Mr. Nels today with the selection singing Lift Every Voice. And I can't tell you, Mr. Nels wouldn't have it any other way. So it's befitting today that here we are at Bond Hill where we're watching our children excel in their science and then our children who came to sing the anthem, Lift Every Voice. So I just wanted to say kudos to them.
Thank you. Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, we have one retirement, civil service personnel, staff member Michael Andriola. And we congratulate him on this new time in his life and wish him well and thank him for his service to our children.
Thank you and congratulations. We're now on the, we're now at the item on our agenda for Hearing of the Public. Each speaker will have three minutes. Mrs. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to this podium to speak. Our first speaker is Kristin Copeland, MD.
Hello.
Hi, nice to be with you today.
So I'm Kristin Copeland, and that was also an amazing presentation. I've gone to a few of these meetings and I have never seen such a great presentation. So, I am here representing the parents of children of high school students in CPS who want, or are looking for later start time. And I'm also a pediatrician at Children's and familiar with the work and the research. And I'm happy to hear that this district cares so much about the health of our children. And I hope that we continue to do that. And I know that there was a special counsel on this topic. So I just want you to know that we remain interested and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker will be Ms. Julie Sellers.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Mitchell, and Treasurer Wagner. I was reading the minutes from the last meeting, section 3D, and you're going to, during your packet for this evening, from the 9/11/17 meeting. And underneath that section, I think the top is page 729, if you want to look at that. But it has, they did not make corrections to the language from last week's treasurer's report. So last week, the treasurer's report said that the district will enter into a partnership agreement with the regeneration schools to bring a high-performing nonprofit school to the west side of Cincinnati. And there was discussion, and they were supposed to say that they would go into conversations to possibly develop. And that's what I have written on my notes. I don't know if they did not get changed in the minutes. So I don't know, did you vote, when you voted on this, did you vote on the agreement? Because the way the minutes are written, that vote did agree to the regeneration partnership agreement. I have not heard anything more about it. But I would like to just say, I have all kinds of research and data about how charter schools are not what's best for our children. And as you can see what is going on just in this school, how much better the public schools have offerings because they have a full complement of services from central office, which is not available in any charter school. And so, I would like to make sure that the minutes do reflect the changes of the board's discussion from last week. And I hope that, because that, what is in tonight's minutes is not what was voted upon last week. And then, according to, I saw a draft partnership agreement, and I saw that there will be additional CPS funding with no cap on enrollment or local dollars. And I would like to say that when I heard the presentation, it said first year, which is going to be K1 with about 200 students. The second year, 23, with doubling that, so that would be 400 students. The third year was, I believe, the fourth and fifth, and then the sixth, fourth year would be the sixth, seventh, and eighth. So to me, that is calculating out that that school could possibly have 800 students. And at that growth rate, five, 200 students times the $1,031 over the five years is $4,545,000 that would be coming out of general funds. And before there is any type of agreement with additional funding, I would like to make sure that we have a true transparency around what this charter is going to be receiving from Cincinnati Public Schools and to make sure that they are not getting local dollars at that rate because at $4.5 million in five years, you could build your own school. They are going to be getting the state formula, which is $8,700 per child. And I know that the people in this district, because of the election from last year, this district does not agree with the Trump and Betsy DeVos agenda. The city and county, they do not agree with this neoliberal type of agenda. And taxpayers do not want to fund this school with local dollars. And I am appalled that they would go in, if this is the agreement, I want to see the agreement before it's signed off publicly. And I want the people in this city to know what the agreement possibly could be. Because at that rate, you could build a school, a new school every five years, for as fast as we're going to grow. So I just hope that there will be a commitment from the board, that there will be transparency around this because this is not the direction that we should be going. If there are things that you could possibly go to that school and see and replicate in this district, great. That's what charters are supposed to be, learning labs that can be replicated into public schools. And they're not supposed to stay as people making profits like this. And I hope that the city is not going to continue to provide that property for them to build it at the Quebec site. And I hope that this is another deal that will fall through. Thank you.
Ms. Sellers, before you go, I do want to point out that, like you, I asked for a copy of the revision in, it looks like, page number 730, line number B, where it talks about entering into a partnership agreement with regeneration schools to bring high-performing nonprofit schools to the west side of Cincinnati. I did, in fact, witness the change in the revision here. So I'm sorry that it didn't catch up to this. I'll ensure that it does. I, in fact, did read it and did read the language, and you're right, it mentions conversations.
Okay, and I just hope that those conversations are not going to be conversations that are done behind closed doors because between the Student Achievement Committee, the first time they spoke to the district, it was less than two weeks later, and they were forming an agreement that they were going to vote on. That is entirely too fast. When the seed school was going to come here, there were all kinds of agreements, and it took a long time to make sure it was done right. When Carpe Diem agreement was made, it was not done publicly, and they were supposed to follow the template from seed school, which was not done. And that has been a failure. And if you are going to give money to a charter with an unelected board, it's not right that it's not done. If you're going to do it, it better be done publicly because I don't know anybody who is in support of this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
Yes, thank you. As you heard earlier, we had two presenters who came in to present a request for a waiver for alcohol use at Clark Montessori High School. You have the resolution in front of you, and I present the resolution for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comment? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
President Copeland, Danzby?
Yes. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
Yes, I do have a very short report. I'd like to be able to report not only to the board, but also the public. Making progress in Cincinnati Public Schools highlights the outstanding work of our teachers and all of our staff members who work with our kids on a daily basis in our schools. I think it's befitting to talk about this right before the recommendations, which oftentimes will have staff members in it. So, for those of you who don't know, Cincinnati Public Schools has over 35,000 students. We anticipate having upwards of about 1,900 of our students in preschool this year, which we're very excited about. We have listened to the public loudly and clearly in terms of making sure that our neighborhood schools have a program focused much like our magna programs. And so you had opportunity to see Bon Hill Elementary. So we had seven of those schools last year. We ramped up an additional nine this year, making it 16. We have resource coordinators. We have 43 of them in our schools, serving our kids to align our resources. Two dental health centers, 24 health-based centers, and also a vision center. In addition, it might be interesting for you to know that 98% of our third graders were on track in terms of the third grade guarantee. Our students' ACT scores have been steadily increasing over the years, as well as our offerings of advanced courses. So, right when we were interviewing our new chief communications officer, she talked with us about NASA. And this is so befitting in terms of us being here at Bon Hill School with a focus on math and science. In 1969, it was a historic year for the United States. And you could ask anyone at NASA, what do you do? And they would all say the same thing: We are putting a man on the moon. So in Cincinnati Public Schools, what we're doing is we're putting students into college. We're putting our students into the workforce, and we're putting our students into the military. And that's what we do at Cincinnati Public Schools. And our staff members, those represented, and our superintendents report, and those who have been working with us for years, that's what they do every single day on behalf of our students. And that's wonderful.
Awesome. Do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
President Copeland, Danzby?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
President Copeland, Danzby?
Yes. One item under updates and inquiries. We talked last time we were together about having a meeting in October at a school site, such as we're having tonight. And board members, you may have noticed that I sent over a memo to the Chair of ADHAR asking that we postpone those off-site meetings until another time. And so I just wanted to update us there. Are there any updates or inquiries? Are there any assignments? Yes?
To make it official, I guess we would be assigning to the board and board staff and administration the follow-up in order to follow the law and the requirements regarding filling a school board member vacancy.
I'm going to give an update on that in just a moment.
That would be my assignment. I think the whole board would be willing to make that assignment as we have a very close timeframe with which to deal.
Well, I think before we can make the assignment and make it very clearly in informing the public, when there is a vacancy at a board seat, there is a very rigid and very easily understandable process and protocol. And it's our intent as a board to follow that process and that protocol. We will have a press conference on Thursday, September the 28th, 28th, at 12 noon at the Ed Center in Room 1A, where we will talk with you about the process, the procedure, the protocol, and filling a vacancy at a timeline, and how folks, you know, who might be interested to participate, as well as a participation process for the public. And so, we'll have a fact sheet, and we'll have a press release and a press conference again on Thursday, September 28th, at 12 noon. Any other inquiries, updates, or assignments? Thank you all for being here. We are adjourned.